Good. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the briefing session of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen, July 28th, 2021. We'll begin this evening with an indication by our community development director, Jeff Hatling.
Laura, thank you for gathering us on a summer night to do the business of this community and thank you for blessing. We're such a great community to be a part of, guide all of us in these times as we move towards another fiscal year of just trying to do things for the community and be with the Board of Aldermen and Mayor tonight. In these things, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Hatling. All right, the first item on the agenda is a briefing on the August 4 regular meeting agenda. We'll have the indication and pledge. And then we have public hearings, 1A, 1B, and 1C that are related. Public hearing 1A is a voluntary contiguous annexation by North Point Development and the consideration of an ordinance annexing such property. B is consideration of a text amendment zoning docket KT 265. And C is a public hearing rezoning zoning docket K 788 for properties located at the end of Wit Station Road. Mr. Hatling?
Yes, regarding the annexation, it's 203 acres because it also includes right-of-way for Salem Parkway. Regarding the text amendments, the rezoning is a general use rezoning and being, we're using the Business Industrial District. The Business Industrial District was originally developed for Triad Business Park, so we're making some modification and recommendations to enhance the Business Industrial District, especially with some of the adjacent property owners. And so there's some text amendments recommendation. We added a couple during the planning board. That's all in the planning board report. And then the rezoning, several parcels, it's listed as 141 acres for the parcels listed. They've since done the survey, a more detailed survey, and it's 155 acres point 31, which is very common because you advertise and do all your posting with the actual parcels. And then, especially with the annexations, they'll go out and do a more detailed survey. But all the legal ads, adjacent property owner notices and all the mapping was for the parcels listed. At the planning board meeting, the text amendment, the planning board recommended 7-1, adoption of the text amendment. Under rezoning, planning board recommended 6-2 approval. Of course, they don't review the annexations. That's in front of you guys on Wednesday night. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, the staff, this evening at the briefing meeting? All right, the next public hearings are 1D, which is a text amendment, zoning docket KT 266, and E, which is rezoning, zoning docket K 789, and our related cases. Mr. Hatling?
Yes, these cases are associated with the town of Kernersville parcel and the Folly parcel, related to the visitor center. We thought at this time, they'll also include the Folly property, just bring it all under these one zoning district, that'd be the IP district. There's a text amendment proposed in the IP district. In zoning, a lot of times you'll have some coverages, maximum coverages for zoning districts. We're recommending that be changed, 60% coverage, 70% coverage, which basically matches our watershed standards. So it's, planning board staff recommended approval, planning board 8-0 on the text amendment, and the rezoning 8-0. No one spoke for or against, so it was a pretty simple case.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have one, Mayor, please. Mr. Hatling, on there, I think I read through it, just double-check it, Catherine or Jeff. We have it listed as Salem Parkway in some places in Business 40 and the other. So do we want to make them all Salem Parkway since that road's been changed?
Yeah, we've started converting all our documents from Business 40 to Salem Parkway.
I think there's a couple Business 40s still left in there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the next item is also a public hearing, 1F, it's rezoning on Teague Lane, zoning docket K 570 A3. Mr. Hatling?
Yes, this is associated with the case of the land exchange, we'll hear later. Up on the screen is a recommended motion, I'm just adding a sentence for the recommended motion. So in the planning board report, you'll see this motion for rezoning, but the new sentence would read, "The said motion of approval," which is of the rezoning, and the planning board's recommending 8-0 approval, and staff has recommended approval. But an additional line would say, "The said motion of approval is based upon the approval of adopting the resolution authorized in exchange of the town-owned property on Teague Lane with Beaumont, North Carolina LLC for property on Teague Lane. So if the Board of Aldermen choose not to do the land exchange, our property would not be rezoned and Caleb's Creek would go back to their final development plan. Caleb's Creek has an approval on their property already through the planning board because it's a two-phase rezoning, but staff is recommending Wednesday night that additional line, so it's tied to a case further down the agenda."
Okay, any questions? All right, the next item is also a public hearing, 1G, it's rezoning at 511 East Bowdenhammer Street, zoning docket K 790. Mr. Hatling?
Yes, this is a general use rezoning. We've done numerous general use rezonings on Bowdenhammer Street. In this case, this is adjacent to the car repair business. Car repair business has a GI zoning district and a RS7 zoning district, so it's just kind of cleaning up where the car repair shop is, where they store some of their car. And staff and the planning board has recommended approval, rezoning from GI to RS7 to GB, general business. You may recall that RS7 was once a boarding house that was torn down years ago.
Are there any questions? All right, that brings us to the public session. 2A, of course, is speakers from the floor. 2B is consideration of a resolution authorizing an exchange of town-owned property on Teague Lane with BEOMA, North Carolina LLC, for property on Teague Lane.
Madam Mayor, Jeff covered a little bit of this in his presentation for the rezoning, but you can see the map up there. The town owns about five and a half acres on Teague Lane where it intersects with Hitchcock Road and Beaumont, which is the developer of Caleb's Creek. They need that five acres. Part of the requirements, road requirements years ago when Caleb's Creek was approved, is that there'd be a roundabout in that area. So they need a portion of that five acres to develop a roundabout. And also they need, they would like some of it for some additional lots. So we didn't want to give up the five acres because if, you know, at some point in time, worst-case scenario, we might use that parcel for a fire station. It was originally purchased by the town probably eight years ago so that we could relocate Station 44 to that site. As you all know, we've been working on a, with Beeson's to go into their station, so if that works out, we wouldn't need it. But anyway, we didn't want to just sell it and then not have a parcel in case we did need it. So we worked with Beaumont. They are offering to trade us, the parcel you see there in red, which is a seven-acre parcel. So it's a little bigger than our parcel. Value of their parcel is a little more than ours. So they're willing to trade us their seven-acre parcel for our five-and-a-half-acre parcel. Jeff has looked at both sites. Either one of them can be used if we need to in the future for a fire station. And if we decide that we don't need it, we would recommend to the board selling that parcel. And, you know, it'd probably bring a little bit more money than what we would get for our five-and-a-half acre parcel. So, and it's literally probably, what, Jeff, 200 yards down the road? Be glad to answer any questions. If you'd like to go out and see the two sites, I'd be glad to take you out and show you. But, you know, they are, for those of you that know where our current site is, the other one is just right, same side of the road and everything, just right down the road. They almost touch, but there is a little bit, there is one parcel between the two of them.
All right, are there any questions, Mr. Swisher? All right, item 2C is a budget amendment, budget amendment number one. Mr. Swisher?
Yes, the first budget amendment, as you all know, been on here through these first budget amendments. It is primarily everything, and it is a carryover from the previous fiscal year where we have ordered the item and we've got a PO in effect for it. It is not, we've not received it and not processed that PO through to the point that we pay for it. So we've got about $1.56 million in, is a total appropriation from the fund balance of that $1.43 million. Over is carryover, which means that that $1.43 million was not spent in fiscal year 2021. We do have four new items in the budget. We've got a, the biggest one is a new roof on our garage at Public Services. That is a new item. We've been trying to patch the roof for the last three or four years. We've had pretty good success in doing that until this last rain and we, our luck ran out. I think it developed about four or five leaks in that roof. Dorn came to me and said, "We can patch it, but you're not getting anywhere patching it." So we've got the roof in there. The roof is $170,000, but the payment on that, and we've not went out for loan yet, for the loan yet on anything. So we're, we'll add it to the loan. Payment's about $22,000 on the roof. We have in there the new Bobcat that I spoke to you all about for Parks and Rec. That payment's about $23,680, but it's offset by reduction in two line items. The other one, the Range building that was approved in the budget, we got quotes on that Range building. It came in about $79,000 over cost. We, you know, when you divide that out by the 10-year loan, it was about a $10,000 a year payment. So that increase in the payment is in the budget. And then we have some renovations in PD, some small renovations for the, our new real-time crime center. So that's the only four new things in the budget. They work out to about $85,000. Everything else is a carryover. So there are some items in here that you'll see. I was trying to find one. Item number four, you know, it says to increase Police Department expenditures, $506,000. That has some offsetting revenue because part of that is the, is the loan for the Range building. Number seven, $616,000 for the street department. There's offsetting revenue of $495,000 that is down in, under general fund revenues. And number one, that's the road repair that we'll do. We will receive reimbursement from CCUC for that. That's the resurfacing of the roads, where, of the town-owned roads where they're doing the pipe bursting and so forth. So some of those have some lease purchase reimbursement in it, as well as some grant reimbursement. Be glad to answer any questions that you have about any specific item. If you look over it tonight, come up with one between now and next Wednesday, you know, by all means, contact me. I'll be glad to get you a detail on what's in that particular line item.
Any questions? All right, the next item is 2D, consideration of apparatus loan agreements with Beeson Crossroads Fire Rescue Department and Colfax Fire Department. And 2E, consideration of an automatic aid agreement with Beeson Crossroads Fire Rescue Department.
Yep. The apparatus loan agreement, as you all are aware, I mean, from time to time, we loan equipment to Beeson's or Colfax, and they loan equipment to us. Now, that's an agreement, apparatus loan agreement that shows that we do that. That helps both of those entities with their insurance rating. It also clarifies that, hey, we'll loan you our equipment, they'll loan us their equipment. And again, that's been doing that. In fact, we have Colfax Ladder Truck. We're using it right now. So those two agreements, like I say, we're putting those in place so that they're there and those two folks can use it for their insurance rating. Same with item E, automatic aid. We've provided automatic aid in the Beeson's Crossroads Fire District for years. They've also provided automatic aid in the Kernersville Fire District for us for years. So both of those are just clarifications on processes that we already have in place.
Any questions? All right, the next item is item F, consideration of a request by KBC, Kernersville Brewing Company, to hold a food truck and vendor festival on October 17 and close a portion of Main Street between Hugh and Armfield Streets.
Yeah, I think KBC has been working on this for a pretty good while. He contacted me about four or five months ago. They're wanting to have a food truck and vendor festival, as you see on the event application, October the 17th, from noon to 6:00 PM on a small portion of Main Street, really the portion up near KBC. They would close it from Hughes Street to Armfield, have wristbands and so forth for entrance. We would probably allow Main Street to be opened up to that point, and then we would detour down the closest road, which I think is one that the Nationwide Insurance would probably turn them down that way. And we'd have to close it at Railroad Street for someone coming south on Main, turn them down Railroad. So we wouldn't block off all of Main Street. We would work it so that some of it would still be open. That way they could access the businesses on this end of Main Street without any problem. So it would just be right there. I think it would, it would still allow access to Giottas as well, the folks in the factory. We would just need to go out and make sure that we block it so that that access is allowed. They would still have access off of Railroad Street also. And I think the 17th is a Saturday, if I'm correct. I'm not sure, though.
All right, any questions?
Sunday. So that would create even less of a problem with some of the businesses here on the, you know, on the south end of North Main because they're closed anyway. Most of the businesses up too nationwide would be closed. So be a lot less traffic to have to route.
All right, item H is a, wait, item G is a consideration of a resolution to transfer a portion of Clayton Forest Drive from the state system to the town's system.
Clayton Forest Drive is down off Highway 66. It's the road that goes down to St. Alert, and we need to transfer that to the town's system so that we can claim it on our Pell Bill allotment.
Any questions? H is a equipment lease for a mower from Parks and Rec.
Parks, we have, we rotate mowers out. We have them on rotation every two years, three years. These are the bigger mowers that we use on the fields, like the reel mower and those type mowers. The other ones, the lease is up for those. We just have them, like I say, on a standard lease. Lease is up, this will renew the lease, or this will renew the lease, and we'll get some new mowers in. It's the first time it's really required board approval. I think they've just changed the way they do their lease. So that's what it's for.
Any questions? Item I is related to the Real Time Intelligence Center.
Yep, this is the Real Time Intelligence Center for the Police Department that was approved in the budget. And there are tax resolutions will authorize the town manager to award and execute contract defusus without really having to go through the bid process. We're allowed to do that if it's the sole provider of a product. And we've laid out in there the three items in that memo that allow us to do that. It's the only product that does not require replacement of the cameras being accessed and integrated. They are the only vendor providing a platform federally CGIS compliant for cloud-based management of integrated video data. And they're the only vendor whose product is compatible with both the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County's video and camera data sharing platform. Basically why we went with them. Everybody in the area is using that. So we would like to use the same system. This memo will allow us to piggyback off of that essentially and go with defusus.
Are there any questions? All right, item J is discussion regarding reserve fire rescue ladder truck.
This discussion started a year ago, maybe, got approved in the budget for $250,000, if I remember correctly, for a reserve ladder truck. We pulled that funding when COVID hit back in 2020, not knowing what, you know, what our revenues would look like that year. We withdrew the funding, never replaced the ladder truck. And honestly, all of the good ladder trucks that we saw, that we were interested in, we had folks from the Fire Department and central maintenance go look at different trucks. All of them that we saw, none of those were really all that great. We just couldn't recommend spending the $250,000 to the board. The ones we found were about $300,000 to $350,000, and we really, that was over the budget that we were allotted. So basically, we just, you know, at the end of 20, well, midway through 2020, we just kind of dropped it and let the money roll back into the general fund. Chief Alderman has been working with Colfax Fire Department. We've used their ladder truck. They've used ours. They ran calls for us. They are selling their ladder truck. They don't have as much need for it. Now they're buying a new pumper truck, I believe. They have offered to sell us their ladder truck for $65,000. Is that right, guys? $60,000. So they already saved $5,000 tonight. So they've offered to sell it to us for $60,000. We would need to spend about $100,000 on equipment, so that would come out about $160,000. So suppose that when we were looking at $250 plus another $100 for equipment, we're down now about $60,000 plus $100. Our folks have looked over the truck. It's a good truck. Colfax bought it new, so they've been the only owner of the truck. We feel pretty confident we can get seven to eight years out of that truck, at which time we would sell it, move the current ladder truck that we currently have, we would move it to reserve status and then buy a new one. So our goal is to have one on the front line and have a reserve ladder truck all of the time, and it will stay at a different station, of course, and run some calls in that area. The truck is here tonight. They brought it up here, so if you all would like to go out and see it after the meeting, it's out in the parking lot. Chief Alderman's here. Chief Bowles is here. They can answer any questions you have now, or they'll be glad to answer any outside when you're looking at the truck. We feel like it's a good deal. One of those that kind of just came up and they said, "Hey, we're selling our ladder truck." It's like, you know, "Hey, we're kind of interested in it." They were asking 95, is that right? Yep. So they were asking 95, but we, you know, having worked with them through the years, having a good relationship, knowing that if it's here, they need it, they'll get to use it too. So we feel like that's, that's the best deal for the town. So they can answer any questions from the technical side of it. I can just tell you, it's a big red fire truck. Sprays water, so. Yeah, we had to pay them, you know, had to reimburse them for bringing it over tonight. Actually, we're using it right now anyway, so we didn't have to bring it too far. And that's all I have on it. And like I say, they'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? All right, then on the regular meeting agenda, we'll have the town manager's report.
I don't have any, I do have one item I'll bring up Tuesday or Wednesday. You want me to cover it now or cover it in a minute?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I've passed out to all of you, and I think I've spoken to all of you. It's kind of a little different. I mean, we do adopt resolutions opposing some bills that the General Assembly comes up with from time to time. There is a bill that, a House bill that made it through crossover, and it made it into the North Carolina Senate. And the North Carolina Senate essentially gutted the original bill and replaced it with a substitute bill and its proposed legislation to restructure oversight of public high school interschoolastic athletics to ensure accountability and fair play. So you might wonder kind of why we would be opposing that, but essentially there are four main schools in the Kernersville area that Kernersville residents go to. Glenn East is the biggest one, Glenn, Bishop McGinnis, and North Carolina Leadership Academy. Bishop being private, North Carolina Leadership Academy being a charter school, and then of course, East and Glenn are both public schools. It's what the proposed legislation will do, is it will dissolve the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, which is currently the governing body. They're a private organization, 501(c)(3). They will dissolve that organization and appoint a new interschoolastic athletic committee to oversee high school athletics. Right now, it's not a political board, and High School Athletic Association's not political. It is appointed, folks are nominated and appointed from their member schools by their member schools. The new committee would be made up of nine appointments from the governor, four appointments from the Senate, and four appointments from the House. None of that, that's concerning in itself because then you have a political board. It will be housed under the Department of Public Administration or whatever it's called. They will, the rules will be created by the boards, the State Board of Education. So you got state politics all over it. The concerning part for the town is what it does to the athletics in local high schools. Not sure about the impact to Glenn and East exactly. Probably have a makeup, a different makeup of the conference in the region. It eliminates Bishop McGinnis from the new commission. As you all know, Bishop has played in the High School Athletic Association, played in that for years. They won, I think, nine straight women's basketball championships, a couple of soccer championships, a couple cross-country championships. They will no longer be allowed to participate in the new commission. They will, I think they have four parochial schools currently in the Athletic Association. They all four will be eliminated, and any private school will also be eliminated. For charter schools, they will be forced to move up one classification, and they'll be forced to move up to the largest conference right above them that they can be in. So NCAA would move up from, I think they're 1A, they would move up from 1A to 2A. Not sure about East and Glenn. They would probably be redistricted or reconference, may not even be in the same conference. So this resolution is, the Board of Aldermen is basically saying, "Hey, we oppose the new legislation of forming this commission. We would rather you work with the High School Athletic Association to address the concerns that you have with them," as opposed to dissolving them. All they're going to do essentially is dissolve them, come back and create a board as political appointees, and then in some sense do about what the High School Athletic Association is doing now, which I've talked to the right many of the athletic directors to see if there was, you know, any support for the new bill, get their sense on what they thought. I haven't talked to anyone yet that's in support of it. All of them have said, you know, the High School Athletic Association, they've got some flaws, but it's much better than the commission that will be run by political appointments from the state, even though the folks will be, you know, principals, athletic directors, superintendents, and still be politically appointed. So they have, support has been given to the High School Athletic Association by, for the rest, or for the coaches association throughout the state. They surveyed, I think, about, they surveyed 426 of the, of the schools received responses, I think, from 250 of the athletic directors, and 92% of them said, "We're not in favor of the bill." So I really don't know why the bill's still going forward, except for it's got a lot of support. I don't think some of the municipalities yet have really paid attention to it because it's kind of over on the side. But I do know they are contacting municipalities and asking them, "Hey, if you've got schools in your district that would be impacted by this, you know, if you don't mind, would you oppose it?" And so we've got the resolution drafted. Be glad to answer any questions. We'll put it on the agenda if you want to. For Tuesday night, we can add it as an agenda item, or you can, or Wednesday night, or you can simply bring it up and vote yea or nay on Wednesday. Be glad to answer any questions. I've read the bill. There's a lot in the bill. Like I say, they completely gutted one bill and just replaced it with this one. Had nothing to do with the original bill. It's not made it back over to the House yet. It's still on the Senate side. It's not made it back over to the House yet, still on the Senate side. It's passed out of committees, my understanding, but that's about as far as it's got. I think they're trying to get a meeting between the High School Athletic Association and the senators that started this. They had one. I don't think it went so well. They're trying to come back and have another one, but I don't know. It, my understanding is they have enough support probably to pass the bill on both the House and the Senate side, unless some of them switch. But they may not have enough support override of veto. So, I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking some of them are beginning to waffle on it because the bill had a lot of steam, and then it started getting a lot of opposition, and I think they're kind of starting to waffle a little bit on it. And the new commission will also, and I don't know currently if the High School Athletic Association does or not, but they will, the new commission will also regulate middle school sports as well for the charter, for the member schools. And I currently don't think they do for middle school. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have on that between now and next week.
Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add this resolution as item two K and also to update the acreage in item one C?
Second.
By Chris Thompson, second by Bruce Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
I don't have anything else right now that I know of for Wednesday.
Okay, we are on the review of the agenda for the meeting on Wednesday, our regular meeting. Mr. Wolf, have you got anything for our, the coming Wednesday night?
Don't believe legal has anything coming up.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will then shift back to the briefing agenda. Matters to be presented by the mayor and Board of Aldermen this evening. Mayor Pro Tem Fulton?
Excuse me, I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Thompson?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Alderman Boyer?
This is an operational question, but are we starting to look at masks, requiring masks inside as the COVID numbers are beginning to creep upward?
We, Crystal and I talked about that today. We're following what, you know, kind of keeping up with what the state is doing, and I think the governor has a press conference tomorrow. Is it tomorrow, Crystal? Three o'clock. So we'll watch that and see what recommendations come from that, as well as from Department of Health and Human Services with the state and the CDC as well.
Thank you. I'd like to commend you for how well you did during the, the first phase of the COVID. By the way, I think the town did really extremely well in safeguarding people.
Thank you.
Alderman Penix? Thank you. All right, matters to be presented this evening. Mr. Swisher?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Wolf?
No, ma'am, have nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Powell?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. If there's no further business before the board, can I have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Alderman Thompson?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Boyer. All those in favor? It's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned.